I'd like to call our meeting, December the 16th, of the City Commissioners to order. Call or roll please.
Stevens. AG.
Here.
Herod.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smiths. We have a call.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the Ministerial Alliance? I guess not, then if you're able to stand, please stand and join in the Lord's Prayer.
Our Father.
Who art in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Commissioner Smiths.
Yes, thank you.
Item number one on the agenda. Election of Vice Mayor. Evidently, we have not followed the rules too closely, and we were supposed to do this in September, according to our attorney, right?
I appreciate that. I'm just changing.
So, I'll call for nominations for Vice Mayor.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Herod.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Call or roll please.
Hang on just a second.
Okay, geez. Wait a minute, we already have a second. What is that, just a second?
Oh. AG.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Herod.
I stand.
Maynard.
Aye.
Question carries.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The bad news is, a mayor's never gone.
Or this.
He won't leave us alone.
He won't take a vacation. That's the good thing, isn't it? All right.
Item number two, consider approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Call or roll please.
Herod.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Question carries.
Item number three, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion is second. Call or roll please.
Herod.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Question carries.
Item number three, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion is second. A second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call or roll please.
Paul.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Question carries.
Item number four, Commissioners' comments.
I'd just like to say that we had a fantastic parade, and I really enjoyed it, got some good pictures of it. I'd like to thank all the citizens of Shawnee who came out in spite of the weather. We had a really tremendous crowd, I think, downtown. Good to see all those people downtown.
It really is. Now, I see a lot of little kids really enjoy it.
Uh-huh.
Forget, as you get my age, how exciting it is when Santa came. I mean, Harry came and I heard kids saying, "There's Santa, there's Santa."
Was Commissioner Winteringer dressed up the same time as you?
No, I took the year off. I'm hurt. I've got bad legs and stuff, getting too old.
Any other Commissioner comments? Being no further than this, this time is item number five, citizens' participation. We have a three-minute limit, but if someone would like to speak to our Commission here, we'd welcome that. Well, if everybody's all set in their seat and very comfortable, then we will move on to the next one. Well, the mayor gives proclamations from time to time. Mayor gives proclamations from time to time. To me, this is a great thing, where we give awards for beautification in our city. I talk about it all the time, being more trash, making this a more beautiful place, a greater environment for all of us to live in. And some people go above and beyond. So it's a great pleasure for me at this time to present some certificates for winners. The first one is the Downtown Business Award to Grow lines LLC, 219 East Highland Street. Is there someone here for that? Come right up here. The Downtown Business Award. Thank you so much. Would you like to say something?
Um, I just.
Here, talk in the mic so they can hear you.
Only thing I would say is, I think the more of us that are in the downtown area, the more we can beautify and clean up, the better. I'm proud of our downtown, and I think it's beginning to pick up a little steam. I hope we're hitting the tipping point where more people will not lose sight of the value of the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. About a round of applause. Okay, the next award is the Church Award. Wesley United Methodist Church. Is there someone here? Oh, looky here. How are you? Gives me great pleasure to give you this award, and we're so proud that your church is making a wonderful appearance in our downtown area.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Fantastic church. So that's a fantastic church.
No, I'd just like to say thank you for this recognition. Our church is very proud of it. All of our flower beds are maintained by our congregation, and so is our mowing and our trimming and all, so it's all done by volunteers at our church. They deserve the recognition for this. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay, this next award is for the Harrison Business Award. East Plaza, Labyrinth Park, Plaza East LLC, 720 East Independence. Is there someone here? Come up, please. It gives me great pleasure in presenting this award to you, and for making Shawnee a better place and a beautiful place for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this is a labyrinth, a walking labyrinth, and if you don't know what a labyrinth is, please Google it. But it's a very, very important aspect in our lives. It helps, if you walk it, it helps to reduce stress. I just saw on the news the other night that they're putting labyrinths in the library at OU for the students during this stressful week to go and help alleviate some of their stress during their tests taken at times. So whether you're stressed or not, it's just a good thing to do, and there's a lot of good landscaping. Of course, now in the winter, it's not quite as pretty as it will be in the spring and summer, but I do invite everyone, please come down and walk this labyrinth.
And that is 720?
720.
East?
Independence.
Independence.
It's just east of, it's just east of Bottom Zone, across the street from Sagalot Grocery Store, Catty Corner, Wall Green.
Well, thank you again so much. Well, this last award goes to the Lions Club Park, for the Lions Club that worked so hard in cleaning it up, and we all know it was needing it desperately. And thank you so much. So if you'll come up, it's a real honor for me to give this to fellow Lions.
Yes, sir.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Here's your award.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate this more than you can imagine. First, I'd like to thank fellow Lions that helped out. We've been doing some volunteer days on Saturdays, James, Bryce, and Jeff Gardner, and all the guys with the city that have helped us out at the Parks Department. Teresa Hendricks, I don't know if you all know that, the YMCA took over the contract to partner up with us with that park. And we'd like to thank Chris Anthony with Steve's Autobody. Do you all remember that water fountain where the kids would go up and put their head in the big lion? Well, Amy Clymer with Bank First, who's an artist, she took the, we got the lion's head to her, and she painted it to look like a lion. So it won't be just plain old yellow, but Chris and his guys at Steve's stripped it down, they primered it, they painted it yellow, then Amy took it, she made it look like a real lion. We took it back to Steve's, they clear coated it, the city's storing it till the good weather comes. The city's bought big outfield fences, so you're gonna see dark green metal fences on the outfield. The Lions Club, our vision is that we're gonna paint all the buildings, the dugouts, the same color as the YMCA, so it's gonna be all those earth tone colors, those light oranges and the beiges, and we just think the park is just gonna be a beautiful place 'cause it did look terrible. And that's just been a big focus, and we are so excited, and we are very proud to take this. We do appreciate it.
One question really. Tell them where you're talking about, where it's located, for people in the TV audience and everywhere.
It's located Airport Drive in Federal, Airport Drive in Federal, by the new Shawnee Public Schools Elementary School, the early childhood development center. So it's between that and the YMCA, it's that, there are five ball diamonds that are right there, and they were so bad, if you had thrown your ball, you wouldn't have been able to find it. But since we mowed and cleaned it, there was already people playing ball in there. So we've got way more plans for that park to make it look good. And as a fellow lion, we appreciate it. And Tom Ferry, thanks.
Consider resolution of support for Zimmerman Properties in pursuit of an 84-unit affordable housing development located off Transportation Parkway. A staff report, Mr. Erickson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission members. This is a request from Zimmerman Properties, who is represented by Mr. Ben Mitchell. I believe Mr. Mitchell is here this evening, and you may wish to hear from him first, because I know that you have a lot of questions, and then I can augment anything remaining after that. I think that may be the best approach. As you'll notice in your packet, and his letter begins on page 29, and then of your digital packet, and the resolution is on page 53. But this was a submittal that came in at the last minute, not only for your agenda, but for the state tax credit program for their deadline, which I think is either at the end of this month or the first of January. And so because of that, we didn't have time to prepare a report or a typical staff analysis that we do, so that's why that is absent from your packet. So if there's not any questions right now of me, I would request that you hear from Mr. Mitchell at this time.
Hey, Mr. Mitchell, if you're here, please come forward, sir. Please state your name and speak into the mic, and actually write your name on a pad there, so we'll have a record, and the TV audience would like to hear you and see you. Since you and I go to, since you and I go to the same barber, we have a great.
It doesn't cost you much, does it?
Charge manager.
My name is Ben Mitchell, and I represent Zimmerman Properties. We are the developer and the owner of the proposed apartment community. The property, as was mentioned, is off of Transportation Parkway. That's roughly 10 acres. We're proposing 84 units with a mix of 48 two-bedrooms and 36 three-bedrooms. Total budget's gonna be roughly $9.3 million. The apartment complex is gonna be financed in part through the Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program. It's administered through the Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency. That entails that the property be affordable, it's rent restricted, and also 100% of the units have, residents have to be income qualified. I can keep going, I can talk a little bit about the company. We're, and we've been in Oklahoma since 1995. Our management company's been in existence since 1968. We manage affordable housing in eight states that we own. We also third-party manage properties in additional four states. So we're very experienced with the program, with the requirements of not only the state, but the federal government. We have properties in roughly 17 communities in Oklahoma. A lot of them, we have multiple properties, because we've gone back in and done either phases or done totally separate deals. One of the examples I gave, Mr. Erickson, was in Glenpool. We have an apartment community that we did back in 2003. We went back in in 2009 and did a second deal, and they have continued to say we've done a great job, we manage it well, quality of the property, which includes, I believe in your packet, there should be some photos, that is the property that's in Glenpool. So we put brick, there's no siding, it's hardy board. So I would be happy to entertain questions, I can keep talking as long as you want me to, but addressing your specific questions might be more relevant, but I'll leave it up to you.
Are all of these eligible for Section 8?
Well, okay, technically, every apartment complex has to accept Section 8.
Okay.
It's a fair housing violation if you reject a resident solely based on Section 8. I will, if I can elaborate, we cannot turn anybody away for Section 8 alone. However, you do have to qualify to live in the apartment community. The biggest misnomer is that you have to earn a minimum income, so you cannot be unemployed and qualified to live in this apartment community. That's the requirement of the federal government. And as an example, a family of three, and because we have two or three bedrooms, we tailor towards families. That's why we don't do one bedrooms. We like family oriented, we put playgrounds and closets. But a minimum they have to earn, a family of three, is $18,900. So they have to at least earn that much, which is roughly $9 an hour. So it's not a lot, but they have to earn something. Then the flip side to that, the maximum, that same family of three can't exceed $27,000. That's the income limit. And so, so your question of just, is it's not Section 8, it's not vouchers, it's not under that program. This program is actually administered through the IRS.
Okay. And you have a company, or Zimmerman owns a company that manages all the apartment complexes?
The management company is named Willard Properties. And our development company, the company I work for, it's an umbrella, is Zimmerman Properties. I work for the development arm. Willard Properties manages the properties for, I'm not a CPA, so for tax reasons, they have things split up into various companies, but it is the same kind, same principles. It's a father and son that own the company, Vaughn Zimmerman and his son, Justin Zimmerman, own both companies, and their families, of course. And we will manage these properties, we will also own these properties.
So the only way this project go forward, though, is if it's a restrictive income? It's not, that's the only way this?
Yes, yes. The only way we're going to continue to go forward is if we get the tax credits for the development. That helps generate, about 70% of the development cost is financed through the tax credits. Otherwise, we wouldn't be, you know, you can't earn enough debt on the deal.
Did you do any research on the need for this?
Yes. I apologize. I tried to get it from our analyst, and I know you don't have this, 'cause I actually just got it on the way down. If you'll forgive me for a second. I can forward this to Mr. Erickson, but in response to that, our market analyst is Chip Art with Integrity Realty out of Tulsa. He does all of our market studies, appraisals, he does them all over the country. The capture rate, which goes into defining what the total number of rent, renters that income qualify, is for the city, is roughly 2,450 households that would not only income qualify, but are currently renters in the community. And this is based on 2010 census data, which means we would have to attract about 3% of those to fill our apartment community. As an, just for reference, the Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency likes to see that no more than 20%. So you fit, there's definitely a need. I've also done rent surveys of existing apartment communities. They're running between 95 and 100% occupied with strong rents. Our rents are gonna be comparable to their rents, and that includes tax, current tax credit developments. I believe the one tax credit community is called Chepul Ridge. I haven't had the opportunity to go look at it, so please don't compare us to them, that's another developer, but I do know that the occupancy for that development is in the mid-90s.
Will the front of the complex be facing I-40 to the south?
The final design is not being completed. My, my plan is that the entrance, since it's gonna be coming off Transportation Parkway, that will be the entrance, so the buildings, there's gonna be a buffer because of the flood area, I don't know how familiar you are with that area of the site, but the I-40 frontage is mainly flood, so that'll be our detention, and of course, if it's in a flood zone, we can't disturb that land anyway. We're not trying to build land out of the flood, we're not trying to take away from that area. We're gonna use, there's a, currently, I think there's a pond, so the plan is to use that pond as our detention area. Of course, we'll have to adapt it to meet code and all that. So the face of the entrance will be off of Transportation, so it'll be to the north.
So with the back of your, I'm looking at some of these pictures here, you know, the back of it, the first picture we have is, well, I don't know how to describe it. But the second one is, I'm just a little concerned, I wanna be sure that the appearance from the highway where everyone is coming.
The back and front would be, look identical.
Okay.
Because there's units on both sides. So if you're looking at that photo, that's both the front and the back.
Okay.
Because there's actually units going on either side of the building.
Okay, so there'd be parking on all sides?
Correct.
Okay.
So there isn't a, and I know what you're getting at, there's not gonna be brick on the front and nothing on the back. The brick will go.
All the way around.
All the way around. So the pictures you see, that's both sides of the building. And we do roughly, roughly 60%, 50 to 60% brick, and the rest is the hardy board, masonry product, which is more durable, in our opinion, than siding. We don't put siding on any of our apartment complexes.
Do you plan to use local, I'm sorry.
No, no, you go ahead.
Do you plan to use, like, local people to build?
We will submit bids, and we'll advertise locally. Of course, they need to be competitive, because this program is, it's one of the other attributes of the state agency that monitor our costs. We can't, so we do have to try to be competitive. We are our own general contractor, we're also our own framing company, but we do bid out material, we'll purchase from here if it's affordable, not affordable, but you know, reasonable as far as bidding. I know a lot of landscapers or excavators, typically that works done locally, at least in this area, but yes, we do advertise.
We just wanna remind you two, I don't know what the Commission will do on this, but if it does pass, you have, there's a state law that any products that are delivered in our city, city sales tax is due on that, right?
That's becoming relevant in every community.
Okay.
No, it's ironic that it's, I mean, you know, what, three or four years ago, that wasn't the case.
Parking, you say, yeah, I think we were just visiting one of us, or a couple of us, that'd be about like 160 cars, maybe? Will that road handle 160 traffic in and out there in the morning? I'm not familiar with that road that much.
I mean, it's a, I'm not in construction, so I apologize, I don't know the dimensions, but, I mean, it's a public, my understanding, it's a public road.
You're talking about the intersection there.
Well, you know, we know the road, it comes down from, yeah, all the way down to the, yeah, to the right. I didn't know if that street is wide enough to handle an additional 160.
I wonder if we'll need to put a traffic signal there.
Hope not.
On terraces.
Can't afford it. Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. Are there utilities to the property?
My research says that it is to the property.
Okay.
Justin, you, did you hear the question?
I'm gonna talk to that quick.
Hey, talk about that, I'm in.
Oh, okay, okay.
Engineer and somewhere.
Great, okay, we'll talk about that.
Okay, I don't have any more questions.
Is this in I-93 school district?
No, sir, I don't think so.
I don't know, honest admission, I can find out.
I don't think it's in I-93, is it?
Oh, it's in.
Because.
North Rock Creek.
North Rock Creek. Wish it was in I-93, we all wish it was south in our school district. You know, I look at your, your listing of places, I find it very interesting that I don't see your units being built in major cities around. Why is that?
We prefer to deal with the rural market. We have created a niche over the past 15 years. If you notice, in the areas, like, we do have areas around Oklahoma City, around Tulsa, but we, we like to have just lands cheaper, so we're able to get more land, so we can have more green space, so we can have the playground, so we don't have to go high rises. So it's more of to fit our, our niche in, in the multifamily arena. We're not, we don't go in and build 200 units either, you know. This is actually, if you look at that list, you only have a few that's over 80 units. So this is actually large for us. It's not large for us in capacity, but in Oklahoma, it's large for us.
How often, how many times a year, or is it once a year, the income is verified on the people that live there, and if they're not, if they're unemployed, how long do they live there before they're put out, or what, what's the deal on that?
If you don't, don't quote me on this, but in general, they do have to qualify on initial, told the initial lease, lease up, and they have to qualify. Then annually, they have to do a reset, which means they have to re-qualify.
Okay.
If they are.
Annual.
Annually, but if their income goes up, there is a waiver, I think it's 110%. So it allows for them to earn a little bit more and still live there. Now, if it falls below, that's not quite the case, because, you know, and it's only, that 110% is, is intended to help prosper. But they do have to do it annually, they do have to, I mean, it's a requirement of their lease that they do qualify on an annual basis. And that's submitting tax returns, pay stubs, and when I talk about the income, I'm talking about your taxable income. So, so it's, you know, assets don't matter, it's what your income is.
So what happens if you do build these, and you can only get 50% occupancy?
Well, we've been doing this for quite a while, I hope we're not coming into a market that we're not gonna be able to build in and maintain occupancy.
So that hadn't happened in any place that you've had?
There's, there's always been times where there might be some lean times, where there might be something, I can give you an example, it's been a long time ago, it's back when we had a property, we built in 2000 in Ponca City, and then when the ConocoPhillips merger occurred, the plant in Ponca City, they downsized it. Well, we had some lean times during that period to maintain occupancy. Now we're back up to, we run a strong 90% there, but we did have some lean times.
And in the meantime, there's nothing you can do about, you still have to maintain that minimum income, and.
Yep.
You don't make any adjustments on that or anything?
We just have to be, you know, it's business, and you just maintain it, and you can look at our volume and the number of assets that we have, we've got the resources that we, you know, we're not a, this isn't our first, first time building apartment complex, so we're able to absorb those. But we do go into these markets with the idea that we can handle, we can, there is a market, there is a need, and in this industry, what's different than a market rate developer, we have to define that there is a need of affordable housing, residents. We can't just lease to anybody, you know, they have to meet the income guidelines. And it's even harder in the rural markets, because your population is small. So when we go to towns like Ponca City, or Perkins, or Cushing, in these smaller towns, we go in with our eyes wide open, so that we know that there's a market there. Shawnee's a strong market, it's a growing community, which is one of the attributes that we look for. It's also diverse as far as the economy, you know, it's not one industry that's driving the whole town, like Ponca City, as my example was earlier. It survived, and the city survived, and it's grown, and like I said, our development there has done well, but that was a hit for about a year.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Everyone.
Mr. Erickson?
Some of the questions that the Commission had regarding engineering design, road capacities, traffic, signalization, we just haven't had those discussions. Yeah, that'd be part of a, of a future development application that would be submitted. So in terms of the development specifics, the, that property is not currently, the previous plat has expired, so the developer, in order to move forward, if you were to approve this resolution, the developer would have to engage their consultants to complete the engineering and the plating process. It is zoned correctly, it is zoned for multifamily development, but there is still. It is zoned correctly, it is zoned for multifamily development, but there is still the full development process ahead of them. And so you would see that plat review come before you at a date in the future.
Is our water and sewer near the, I mean, we're not going to, how much we're going to expand to get water and sewer to this facility or not?
We wouldn't spend anything. It would be up to the developer to extend those costs.
Okay, okay. Help me understand, you know, I have this theory or thinking in my mind, I guess I've heard of build it and they'll come. And I find myself, I've seen so many low-income housings in our city. And I just wondered, you know, when I add up all the numbers, we're over a thousand units for reduced income in our city, that as I add them up. And I struggle with, how do we, how is this different than some of the other housing that is here? And I know it comes on the tax rolls, I know that's good, but if these people have to be employed, maybe, Justin, we do benefit because they're going to be working and spending money in our city. But help me understand the difference between these and some of the other low-income housing that's in our city.
Yeah, certainly, sir. We have a wide variety of tax credit properties in the city already. Now, some of, many of the projects are specific for a certain population. We have housing that's designed for individuals with, say, mental disabilities or physical disabilities. We also have housing that is specifically designed for, that is age-restricted, so it's senior housing. And much of what has been developed more recently is senior housing in terms of tax credit projects, the Legacy Park.
I guess the last one that was built out here was that Lindell Apartments.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Where is that?
Kennedy, Farrow and Kennedy.
Okay.
One of the reasons it hasn't been is since we talked about the bill changing all around, all the tax money and tax credits have been going to Lott, because they had to build homes and everything, and apartments and everything for about twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand troops and their families. So all that money, several years have gone to Lott. I've been to the hearing, so that's.
Do the people that are, you were talking about that apartment down there off of Farrell Complex or whatever, are they the same as this one that's being built? They have, you know, I go down there, and I'll tell you what, I drive through there, and I see people driving some unbelievable sixty thousand dollar cars. And it bothers me if they're in that restricted income thing. And maybe, but it's not, and I've been through there two or three times and seen the same cars. It's not like just a visitor maybe has come to visit, or maybe they're visiting and staying permanently. But I wrestle with that because, help me understand, it's the same thing down there on Farrell that they're going to build out here?
It is the same thing in terms of, they're utilizing the same, the same tax credits that are available. Now, some of the properties, as Mr. Mitchell explained, this development is entirely affordable. Some of the developments have mixed, where some of them are affordable units under restrictions, and some of them are market rate. To be honest with you, I don't, I don't know, I don't have that composition for the city. Some recent projects, though, as Vice Mayor mentioned, was the second phase of Linden Apartments, which was thirty-six units. That was completed in twenty twelve, thereabouts. And then Cottage Park off of Kickapoo was completed in twenty twelve as well with thirty-two units.
Because there's several units that don't have listed on it, the high-rise and the apartments over on Main Street, Prince Hall, and then the absentee, they're going to build a hundred residents. So you've got probably two, three hundred, two hundred that leaves that are not even listed on them.
Well, I guess I try to think for our city down the road twenty or twenty-five years. I don't want it to be part of a short-term thinking. And I guess, are we setting us up, in your opinion, as a city planner, for making the city to be a low-income magnet? A reduced-income magnet for people in our city?
I recognize that you guys are weighing a lot of conflicting emotions. When I look at the minimum, when I look at the salary ranges that we're talking about, the minimum income is about nine dollars and twelve cents an hour that someone would have to make to be able to qualify for assistance with a family of three and be able to live in this facility. And I don't, to me, it's hard to imagine someone commuting or being attracted to Shawnee for a job that pays nine dollars and thirty cents an hour when they can readily get that in Midwest City or Oklahoma City. So respectfully, I don't think that it would necessarily attract people from outside of the area. I think, you know, kind of the wild card in this, if you, that I think about is, what we're talking about is providing eighty-four brand-new units that are energy-efficient, that are new, very livable, that don't have lead paint, that are fully insulated and meet today's energy code. And so I think what you have to consider, too, is that there's a number of families, a number of people out there that are living in substandard conditions currently in the city. And we've torn down a hundred and fifteen homes in the last three years. We've, there's some you drive by every day where, you know, people are paying two or three times what they would pay for in this facility for utility rates. So I think you, I would just caution you on that.
So I see where you're going with that, Justin. And I guess I would ask you, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, the gentleman said that, you know, twenty-ten census showed the demographics, there was, I think around two thousand families that would qualify.
Right.
We have a thousand units or so already. So just from that, you would say that there probably is room for families that are already living here in substandard housing to move out to the new eighty-four units? And it wouldn't necessarily, our population wouldn't change, it would just, people would move into a nicer place, and maybe those older homes would be demolished or whatever.
That's my opinion, yes, sir.
I think it's kind of interesting, the timing on this with the talk about the new retail development center, and I think you pointed that out, and also the location. I mean, it's just not that far away. So people in that income bracket that work at those kinds of jobs that need a nice place to live, wouldn't have to commute very far and probably could have rent that would make them live a little more comfortably and spend more, have more spending money to spend, eating out in places like that in Shawnee, I'm hoping.
What is your recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, my recommendation would be to approve the resolution.
What is your recommendation?
I concur with everything Justin said. Commissioners, you know, we need to provide housing for all types of our citizens. I do realize that a development like this does task our services some more than, you know, a non-rent-controlled place. The police chief will tell you, the fire chief will tell you, those are places where we send more first responders and we send more police officers, there's no doubt. We do have a need, though, however, for this type of housing in the community. If we want to think about ways in order to create better wealth for our citizens, we need to be looking at opportunities in economic development to grow our manufacturing base and bring some more industry in here that helps grow those salaries from nine and ten dollars an hour to fifteen and twenty dollars an hour. So, you know, we've got an opportunity here to put some housing like this in an area where most of the people that are going to live in it have the opportunity to work in a close proximity in a retail-type position where they'd be making that kind of salary. So six of one half and a dozen of the other, but I agree with Justin, and those are some of the other things I think the commission needs to think about.
What is the time period that this is, is there, is there a certain time period?
I believe it's fifteen years. Is that, the tax credits are?
Sure.
Can you say what's the time period we're talking about?
So is this going to be a rent-controlled, income-controlled forever, or is it a period of time?
It will be under the program for forty years.
Forty years?
Well, it's the program itself, the tax credit program is a ten-year program, and then the.
I'll be sixty.
Yeah, right.
We can always do a senior deal for later on.
Thank you, sir. Okay, gang, further discussion among that.
Well, I point out, just because we approved it, if the commission decides to approve the resolution, it doesn't mean it's going to get funded, because he still has to go to the housing authority in Oklahoma City, and they have to approve it.
Okay, so we're just giving him basically permission.
Well, he can't get it funded without this resolution.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Would you read the title, please, ma'am?
This is a resolution of local support for affordable housing development located in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma.
Colorado, please.
A.G.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynor.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Winteringer.
No.
Item number eight. Acknowledge the sales tax report, and don't be telling us about the state making some mistake or something, huh?
Mayor, Commissioner Diane Smith with the city accounting office. In your packets, you have a memo from Cindy Simantelli, who is on holiday, and I'm filling in for her, so yes, there is some bad news and some good news on the same memo page. The December sales tax receipts were down thirty-four thousand, four thirty-three. However, last month, the city was up two hundred and forty-six thousand, and there was an issue with a ninety-four thousand dollar submittal that we thought it was submitted to Shawnee and Air. We were suspicious of it, and it turned out that it was incorrect, and we should not have received the money. So while our number this month is down, in essence, the sales tax is up by fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-six, if you remove that ninety-four thousand dollar refund back to the state. So year-to-date, we are up four hundred and forty-two thousand, eight forty-three, or five point four seven percent. And the December sales tax received totaled one point three, or one million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, twenty-five dollars. Any questions?
Very good. Just a comment on that. I had an opportunity to visit this past week with a fellow that works at Lowe's. And I said, is the building over from the storm? He said, oh, no, it's just now starting. Said these spec houses and things that are being built because of the storm, which was very encouraging to me. I was wondering if we had received a surge, you know, from the storm of all building materials and all those things. And he said, they're just now starting to see people starting to build homes back and everything. So that's very encouraging toward our sales tax in the future. City manager's report. Yeah, I think so, probably insurance delays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things tonight. Three things that we're doing internally to try and bring some more information to you guys and control some of our costs. Pension choice, commission approved that earlier this year in September, it went into effect. We should have some reports here shortly. About sixty percent of our employees stayed with defined benefit plan, and about forty percent of them went with defined contribution plan. So we'll have some numbers for you to give you an idea of what the savings was with that, so that we can use it for budgeting purposes coming up here in the coming months. Health and wellness, the commission approving no smoking and the T set money and things like that, we've done a couple of things recently here that we're trying to create a healthier workforce. Obviously, the no-smoking policy on city properties is one of those. We recently held a health fair right in here last Friday. And we're also looking at the potential for corporate memberships for our employees at the YMCA. I don't know exactly what that looks like yet, we'll bring it back to the commission when we know more about it. But I'm encouraged that with Teresa Hendrick's direction at the YMCA, that we'll be able to do something where we can get more than, I think, twenty-seven employees to be members of that health club in particular, so.
Is that covered by health insurance, or would that be a city cost?
You know, we're going to look into that, Commissioner. There is a possibility for us to look at, you know, having a health and wellness program as part of our insurance policy to bring those policy figures down. And we do think they're going to be going up. We're going to be looking at things potentially to try and curb those costs if employees are smokers or things along that nature. So in some time, we'll be able to give you more information about that.
St. Gregory's, I think they still have the program where they can, it's fifty percent or half price for the employees and for the city, and that used to be that way.
We have, we have the public safety employees have, already have a pretty good discount with the Y. We're just wanting to extend that to the other staff as well. And there's some ways that we're looking at doing that, so. We're also going to be looking at our travel and uniform policies. You know, we've got employees in mud holes and things like that, and we've been looking at how much we spend on that and on boots and things like that to try and curb those costs. So we're going to put some things in place that help that. We're still going to buy those uniforms, by the way, but we're going to just make sure there's a policy in place so that each department has a similar policy. And then we're going to update and update a travel policy that we've got that we need to put in a better place. Couple of other things. I have personally, of course, the weather sort of cut us offline a little bit. We were supposed to meet with O G E to talk about energy savings. Where can we find efficiencies without going into in-depth studies and things like that? Take advantage of some of the smart hours, energy programs and things like that that O G E has. And then we're also potentially going to work with them to not have to build the back hall or the network for our AMR eventually. AMR is that automated meter reading. And, you know, a lot of cities have gone into that, and they've built a wireless mesh or some sort of communication network so they can backhaul that information back to their utility department. We're looking at the possibility, nothing assured here, that we'd be able to use their network to do that, not have to build our own back hall. And we could just put the meters in the ground that would actually communicate with their system and use their system to help communicate with ours. Along the energy savings, I know James and Damon in the garage, James Bryce, they're doing some, have been working on some alternative fuel type of programs, potentially propane, potentially natural gas. And I know they're going to some training here coming soon, and I wanted to make mention of that. We are still continuing to use Workforce Oklahoma to do cleanup around the lake and in some of the areas, lakes and rivers. You know, in the wintertime weather can permit sometimes and not in others, but we are still working with those guys to continue to clean up.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Can we use, like, out at the expo, can we not use volunteers?
We can use volunteers. With this particular program, though, it had to be storm-related.
But I mean, like, Saint, I mean, like, O B U has students that do have to do so much volunteer work and so forth.
Yeah, I think we could probably do that. We do that with other different programs that we have, yes, sir.
Have we abandoned all the creeks? We say we have them out the lake, or we still, it looks to me like we have some work on some of our creeks here in town, huh?
We've got plenty of work to do.
Linda lives out there, we don't care about that.
They're doing a beautiful job. I love to see them show up every day. But I did have a question, because I had gotten a call, and I think Justin has also, from a gentleman that is a member of the West Side Neighborhood Watch group, and he lives over there, I think it's, is it on Broadway where they have that creek that runs through there that has a lot of debris in it?
I know we've had a call from the gentleman that lives on Beard, Beard and Redbud Park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's one of our targeted areas. But we started downtown and we're working our way north to some of those other areas, so we'll get there eventually.
Do you think you'll get that cleaned out? Okay.
Finally, Mayor and I met last week with the VITIS Foundation. They were interested in the nine-one-one negotiations and what was going on with that. So apparently, the VITIS board is interested in that as a potential county-wide initiative. I have no idea where that'll go. Our conversation with Michelle Briggs was really just, here's from our perspective, why we're doing what we want to do and what are the efficiencies and better service provide provisions for that. So I'll know more about that down the road. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I talked to Melissa Dennis about the nine-one-one, and she said that they claim they have laid off personnel, and they're going to be within budget, so they won't have to have any additional funds. I asked her about the cell phone money, and she said they have it on deposit. And I said, well, why don't they pay it?
Yeah, I don't know.
You mentioned this energy saving as far as natural gas and propane. I'd like to see you get some people that are experts in that, because I've heard a lot of information about propane being a lot better source rather than natural gas. And I just would like to hear some people come in and explain that a little bit better to us.
Sure.
Because I understand you get a lot more mileage with propane than you do with natural gas.
I don't know necessarily mileage, but.
That's why I want to, I want to, I want to know the, I want to know it, you know?
And we're still in the beginning stages of it. I don't want to, you know, get us off our attention. We'd be glad to do that.
Right.
You know, there's pros and cons to each of those, so.
That's what I'd like to see a study on, is what I'm saying.
Any other thing? City manager? If not, then we'll move on to item number ten. Consider bids proposal, police firing range and tower project. Are we going to open an award tonight, or are you just going to let, huh? Come and tell us what you need.
We actually like some time to review and go over the bids and prefer it. I'm trying not to track up, it just came from a search warrant.
Oh, I saw all of my boots.
I'm trying not to check James's floor, so. But, yes, we'd like some time to look over the bids and review the bids.
Okay. Tell you, come back and for a recommend, huh?
You have to read them.
The first bid is a W. Allen and Mack, up for two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. The next one's a versatile construction of Edmond, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. And the last one, the receipt was at the company loaned to have a sulfur for two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. I'm ashamed we didn't get any local bids.
One, he did have two contractors in town, and both of them have gone out of business. They're having an auction on the twin for B and B. I've worked with all three of these companies, they're all good companies.
And how much did we budget for this?
This, I will tell you right now, this is way over.
Are you trying to build a tower to Bablin, or are you trying to?
I'm sure one is taking this much.
I may as well table a bid for staff to look them over.
Second. Colorado, please.
Aye.
Wintering, I'm sorry, Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
A.G.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
City Hall ADA Family Restroom Project. Well, you and old Don been working together and only getting one bid from anybody?
It's tough to bid right now. I'm telling you, even on some of the other projects that we don't have to go out for bid on, we're having a terrible time getting some people to work on stuff for us. But we did send some of these out in the mail, we did advertise in the paper, the website, bidding, plan holder rooms. And I didn't have many picked up out of my office at all. There was only like two people picked a, picked a plan up out of my office. But it is under budget. We had budgeted thirty-three thousand dollars for this, and the one bid I got from Oklahoma Construction out of Shawnee was thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. And staff would like to defer this to the next meeting to at least look over some of the stuff in the bid packet and talk to the contractor before award.
Second.
I have one question. At the set, a case of, at the risk of sounding completely stupid here, what is a family restroom project? Does that mean you get to take the whole family inside one restroom?
If you wish. This is, this will be ADA accessible, and it'll also have the option, we call it a family restroom. If you bring your grandchild in or a parent brings their kid in, they can take and lock the door and do what they need to in there, change your baby. It's have a, it has a baby changing station.
Okay.
Instead of, if you have a granddaughter and you take her into the men's restroom.
Right.
Is it a brand-new bathroom or just adding on what we got?
No, we'll take the men's restroom that's up here in the hallway and completely redo the inside of it.
It's just one restroom out with that price, and we changing all the restrooms in the building?
Just one restroom at right now.
Research that bid, that sounds good.
Just one more thing, Commissioners, and that, without any comments about the bid, this is part of our ADA transition plan that we have to, you know, we're doing sidewalks, we're doing restrooms, we're doing city facilities. Everything we've built new now has to be ADA accessible. We also have to go back and retrofit some of our old buildings, and this is a part of something we've been looking at.
Well, just think about it, you've got jackhammer, the floors out, you've got to move all of the toilets around, takes a lot of space, you have to move the walls and everything, and, yeah, that's probably a good price.
We'll let you decide. Chair will entertain, we had a motion and a second, and we had a question, so now we just need, any more questions? Not Colorado, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
A.G.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number C, snow and ice removal assistance. We talked about that last week, and you decided.
Yeah, they've got one bid.
Just one, one proposal was all we received, Mayor. Commissioners, Don Lynch, emergency management director, as was mentioned, the one proposal was received and opened at the commission meeting on December 2nd. Proposal was from Silver Star Construction Incorporated of Moore. The proposal tabulation was read into the record, and you have a copy of that, your staff memo. We reviewed the proposal, and everything was found to be in correct form, therefore, staff is recommending awarding the contract to Silver Star Construction. Whether or if we use them, the cost will be paid out of the street department budget when we need them for that.
It's all move.
No motion and a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second?
You didn't have to have them this last time, did you?
Fortunately, we, our street crews, by the way, streets and operations did an excellent job with what we had, and so.
I've heard from five different people in different areas how some of our main streets were so clean after that deal, so to be complimented.
Absolutely.
Any of the whole staff that was involved in that.
But we would like to have this option, should they be available and we do need them.
We have a motion and a second. Colorado, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
A.G.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, any new business?
No, any administrative reports?
Just one point I wanted to make, the city attorney's direction, we're trying to get questions from Commissioners on Wednesday prior to us putting the agenda out, so if you have questions about a particular department that you want to know about, we'll make sure they get on the agenda and we meet open meeting lots. So, please contact us if you have any questions with administrative reports for the department.
This is for the SMA?
For all of them.
Okay.
SAA or the city commission.
There is no further business with the municipal authority. I'll adjourn to municipal authority, and I'll adjourn our meeting for the night. Thank you, folks, for coming.